Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, here and on Zoom to the West Orange Planning Board, meeting September 3rd, 2025 at 6:30 PM in council chambers. Notice of this meeting was given to the township clerk and posted on township bulletin board and township website calendar and sent to the West Orange Chronicle and Star Ledger. This meeting has been properly noticed to the public in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act. No new matters will start after 10:30 PM. I ask everybody to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. The next planning board special meeting will be held on September 10th, 2025 at 6:30 PM in person in council chambers. The next planning board regular meeting will be held on October 1st, 2025 at 7:30 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please.
Mr. Alpert?
Here.
Mr. Cardoza?
Present.
Ms. Caffrey?
Here.
Mr. Klein?
Here.
Mr. Novarin? Mr. Wooks? Councilwoman Scarpah?
Present.
Mayor McCartney?
Present.
Mr. Guarino?
Present.
Chairman Bago?
Present, thank you. Ms. McGovern, will you swear in the township professional, please?
Hey. Do your right hand. Do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yeah, we have today, I should have said your names before I read them. If you could each just say your names on the record.
Gerard Hazel.
Ryan McNeil.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the application before us this evening is PB 24-01 West Essex Highlands Incorporated, Block 179, Lot 32, Zone IH1. Wonder what the applicant is proposing to develop a 496 student inclusionary multifamily residential development on a vacant 120-acre property in the northwest corner of the township. Mr. Efron? I'm sorry, Mr. Plucker, you want to say something?
Oh, I just could have put an appearance on the record.
Okay, Mr. Plucker.
Good evening, lovely. Good evening, Brian Plucker, on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Plucker. Mr. Weisletter, would you like to, you have information for the council, for the planning board?
Would you like to stand right here?
Perfect.
Thank you.
Smile broadly, so.
Uh, thank you. This is a letter dated August 25th, 2025. Uh, first name is Seth, last name Weisletter, 17 Howe Drive. This is from myself to the township of West Orange Planning Board. R.E. West Essex Highland, Inc., PB-24-01. Dear members of the West Orange Planning Board, I live on Howe Drive and have been following the testimony about the steep slope on the eastern end of the property directly below the proposed building D in the development application. The conflicting reports from Langdon Engineering and Jeffrey M. Gola Princeton Hydrill only raise more serious questions. For those of us whose homes sit at the bottom of this slope and already rely on retaining walls, the stability of the slope is a major safety issue. I cannot forget what happened a few years ago on Northfield Avenue in West Orange when a rockslide forced families from the Ranjo Lynn Apartments. That disaster displaced residents and showed that the risks could have been avoided if they had been studied and addressed earlier. A report for the township on nearby properties found conditions conducive to periodic rockfall and recommended immediate and future protections. The report also highlighted the importance of examining surface drainage patterns during normal and extreme rainfall. I am not convinced that this has been fully studied for the slope directly below Building D for this project. We must not repeat that mistake. Given these facts, I respectfully request that the planning board retain an independent geotechnical engineer to conduct an independent study of the slope stability and the potential risks to the homes below from blasting and construction of Building D. This study must be performed using the highest recognized professional standards available to assess rockfall, slope failure, flooding hazards, and recommend pre- and post-construction mitigation steps where appropriate. These risks need to be measured and addressed now, not after the fact. This will ensure that our homes will remain safe in the long term. On behalf of my neighbors on Howe Drive, we are relying on the township of the West Orange Planning Board to take every reasonable step to ensure our safety and well-being, making it a top priority. Nothing can override the laws of physics. Let's have all the answers upfront, not after the fact, when it may be too late. Respectfully, Seth Weisletter, 17 Howe Drive, West Orange, New Jersey.
Thank you, sir. Just for your information and the public's information, at our last meeting, we asked our engineer to look at both Langdon and Princeton Hydro's reports and evaluate both of them and come back to the planning board with what they feel is the most rational thing to do, whether it's to get more geotechnical reports or do they have enough information on both sides? So we'll wait to hear from them after they do their reports.
Chairman?
Mr. Plucker.
Uh, just on that, and I respectfully, and I do recall that CME was asked to take a look at that. I do have a Langdon report responding to Princeton Hydro's testimony. I have it, it's finalized just between the holiday and a lot of stuff going on in life. I have not yet served it. I will be doing so tomorrow. So I would ask that CME hold off until we get the report in and Mr. Seal can come back on the 17th to testify as to it.
That's fine, I think they can get started, they can get started and then add that in.
Thank you.
Okay, all good?
Next witness is will be rebuttal that way from the app. Is that up on?
I don't know yet. I want to see what our guys have to say. That's going to make the most sense. Thank you, Mr. Weisletter.
It's, can I, um, all right, cancel, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
I have a comment.
Councilperson Scarpah.
Yeah.
Okay, guys, guys.
The, the planning board has heard conflicting testimony regarding the threat posed to the homeowners on Howe Drive from the, from the West Essex Highlands. And they've requested an independent geotechnical engineer be retained and access the risk of the properties. You know, applicants are required to establish escrow funds for this purpose, to hire independent experts. And particularly where public safety is at issue, there can be no excuse for not retaining a truly independent expert. We cannot task the board's contract engineer with being the arbitrator of opposing experts. I think it's imperative that we have an independent geotechnical engineer be retained.
Thank you, Councilperson Scarpah. Okay, do any members of the board agree? Councilperson Scarpah, our engineer and our planner are the towns and our independent expert. That's why we call on them. So, and they do have, uh, CME does have independent geotechnical experts. So we will wait to hear back from what they have to say and then the board will decide. If they feel in their estimation that they need other outside help, they'll, they'll inform the board. But at this moment, we're going to, they are always and has been our independent planner.
I feel that an unbiased or...
They are unbiased.
An unbiased firm should be...
Well, they are, they are unbiased. And that's why the planning board uses both firms. But thank you very much for your comment. Okay, uh, Mr. Efron?
Thank you, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. Uh, we have two witnesses tonight, uh, that one is, uh, well, Mr. Litwania and potentially his associate or partner, Bill Green, who worked with him on this matter. They will be speaking to traffic and engineering and related planning and civil engineering matters, including RSIS issues. Uh, in addition, we have our planner, Dennis Hudasco, who will testify after they have completed their work. Um, it's, as I mentioned last week, it's potentially possible that we will have a very brief supplementation by Princeton Hydro um, in regard to a letter from the engineer that was recently submitted. I don't have confirmation of that yet, but if they do provide that, it'd be very brief, probably only half hour. Um, otherwise, these are our witnesses, uh, completing our witnesses, with the exception potentially Princeton Hydro, um, potentially needed to come in and supplement. That would be on the 17th, I assume. Uh, in addition, as I mentioned, we would reserve our rights to respond by way of expert evidence to the potential independent engineering analysis. Before we begin our evidence, there is one task I have to do. I apologize, um, we, we try to keep these as neighborhood and friendly forums, but I do have to make one motion that, um, I, I'm required to do at the earliest outset. Um, I understand, Mr. Chairman, it's something we may go into later, but I am required to at least introduce it now. It's a matter of recusal of a board member, and since board members sit as judges and that this is a quasi judicial proceeding, it's necessary when one seeks recusal, one does it prior to the commencement of hearings, after you first learn of the need. You can't wait two more days after cross-examination happens or things happen and then say, now I'm going to go seek recusal. We're obligated legally to seek recusal of a judge when we first learn of the issue. Last week, an email was sent to me, regretfully, this involves the mayor. An email was sent to me last week, um, by Jonathan Redwine, who testified, uh, on behalf of the Environmental Commission at the last meeting. Um, you may recall, Mr. Plucker made an initial statement that he cautioned Mr. Redwine against testifying because he believed that would violate the township settlement agreement and the good faith obligations underlying it. Um, after Mr. Redwine's testimony, um, Mayor McCartney did email Mr. Redwine himself and copied Justin Goldsman. And in that email, the mayor expressed her displeasure that they tested, that he testified for the commission. I'm paraphrasing, Mayor, if I'm incorrect, you can always correct me, I have it here. And that the mayor felt it was improper, that they should have heeded the advice of legal counsel, that this matter is governed by the settlement agreement. And then the mayor quoted Mr. Plucker's letter from May, excuse me, from May 6th, 2025, to the council and various officials. And Mayor McCartney, in her letter to Justin, emailed to Justin and Ju, to Justin and Jonathan Redwine, relied upon Mr. Plucker's advice to the township in which he said there should be no criticism or opposition from township officials to this project because that would be deemed a breach of the settlement agreement. And Mr. Plucker's letter essentially said, directly said, "We will consider suing if township officials continue to allow comments to be made at governing body meetings criticizing this, join in such comments, fail to criticize such comments, et cetera." Um, that letter was sent to Ms. McGovern. I don't know if it's on the agenda items of documents, but it is in the board's records from Mr. Plucker. Um, we can go into this in more detail and I can submit a writing supporting the motion, but I'm obligated at this point to move...
Submit it in writing, please, the board will, I will review it with, submit it in writing, please, I will review it with our council.
Okay.
And I would ask that any documents referred to be produced.
Wait.
Any documents we refer to will be provided. And obviously, I mean no disrespect to the mayor, but I believe it represents a, an issue that requires recusal. So I'm obligated to raise this now before we go further.
Fine, you send me stuff in writing and we'll take a look at it. Mr. Plucker?
Oh, no, I just wanted to make clear that there were some emails and communications referenced. I just hope all, everything that Mr. Efron referenced will be produced because I have not seen some of the things he's spoken about.
Okay.
I was not a recipient either. I was copied, I've given a copy later.
Gotcha, okay. Mayor McCartney?
Sir, um, I did send an email to Jonathan Redwine because I have been a 20-year council, town council liaison to the Environmental Commission. And what my email stated was that I was disappointed that they read the letter from the Environmental Commission, um, on behalf of some of the members of the Environmental Commission because we haven't finished, this application is still pending and we haven't heard from our own engineers. So that's what I wrote in the letter and I didn't have Mr. Plucker's letter. The piece that, the excerpt there came from the TAP article, so that was part of it. But our town council has been provided letters from our legal department telling the council also not to respond when people come to the podium during council meeting because there is still an, uh, an application pending. So I'm sorry if you took that backwards. It wasn't that I was defending in any way, Mr. Plucker. I cut and paste the piece from the TAP article, which was sent to me, and my comment was that I am disappointed because the application is not complete.
Okay.
And that they should hear all the testimony.
I appreciate that and we will certainly look at that, your expense mayor in the context of what we submit.
Okay, good. We will, we will take a look at every, Mr. Plucker.
And if I'm, and without going back to look at my correspondence, which I'm not going to do now and waste everybody's time, I'm not, by staying silent, I'm not agreeing that whatever was quoted or not quote, or spoken by Mr. Efron is exactly what was in my letter. And I would like an opportunity to obviously see whatever he's going to produce and I could respond accordingly.
Yeah, no, and I thought I was being clear that I was merely paraphrasing. I was not attempting to quote, nor was I quoting the mayor's letter.
Thank you.
We will review everything and then bring it to the public with a decision. But thank you all very much. Okay, good, you're up, sir.
Okay, um. We're going to have Mr. Litwania present his verbal report. We'll qualify him. And then they're going to turn to the PDF slideshow that Mr. Fagan has. So they won't be using that immediately, that'll be used after the verbal report is...
Fine, fine. Sit down, Mr. Litwania, please have a seat, sir. And your colleague?
We can move it.
Gentlemen, sit down, go right ahead.
It's fair.
Yes, let's get them a microphone.
Who's testifying?
Mr. Litwania.
Which one is Mr. Litwania?
Left.
Okay. And Mr. Litwania, please raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, could you please put your full name on the record, spell your last name and give your address?
Hang on, you need a mic.
You need a microphone. I saw this thing, I thought this was a mic.
Please talk close to it so you're heard.
Thank you. Alexander Litwania. Address is, Re Trading Coast Trail, Lake Village, New Jersey.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have to keep it very low. Mr. Litwania is very soft spoken. So we want to be able to hear everything that he has to say. Thank you. Go right ahead, sir.
Uh, are you able to hear me, by the way, my mic?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay. Uh, we, we're going to, I'll let Mr. Litwania give his qualifications in the field of civil engineering, um, and professional planning.
Basically, I've been doing engineering and traffic transportation planning for over 30 years. As a matter of fact, I was reviewed one of the previous applications to the board on this very same project. Most recently, we worked in...
Mr. Litwania, is your license still good in the state of New Jersey? Is it, is your license active in the state?
Yes, license in New Jersey and Pennsylvania at the present time, previously in Manhattan.
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Mr. Litwania has testified before us before. He has esteemed, uh, bona fides, so I would recommend that we accept him as a traffic engineer? Is that the way, the way you're presenting him for, sir? Mr. Efron?
And, well, and as a planner and civil engineer, there are other aspects to his testimony. For example, under the RSIS standards, so it's not limited to traffic, but he'd testify as a civil engineer in the traffic and other engineering fields and as a planner.
And your license as a civil engineer and planner is, is active in the state of New Jersey, sir? Is that correct? Yes? Mr. Litwania?
How is your license currently active for engineering and planning in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, thank you, okay, good.
I have one quick question for Mr. Litwania.
Unless any members of the board have any questions, we'll accept Mr. Litwania as a planner, civil engineer, and traffic engineer in the state of New Jersey.
Correct, I just want to establish for the record, Mr. Litwania alluded to it, but I couldn't quite hear. Mr. Litwania, I understand you were the engine, the expert in these fields for We Care in connection with the 2006 proceeding on a different version of development on this site, is that correct?
Yes, traffic engineer.
I'm going to object, I think that with the, when you talk about We Care, I thought the We Care objector group that is here today was not the same group that existed back then.
There was no corporation then. Let me just say that, let's rephrase it. Mr. Litwania, I understand you were the traffic engineer who testified as an expert for the objectors in the 2006 hearings concerning this property. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Please proceed with your presentation.
Go right ahead, Mr. Litwania.
Basically, we had a memo that was presented dated August 22nd, 2025. Background on this is, we looked at this previously, so now we're looking at it again in a new light. There are 496 apartments to be put in place that versus the smaller development, less intense. And what we're doing now is we're looking at it under the offices of the residential site improvement standards. The standards of New Jersey presently govern residential development in the state. Most people don't realize, but their own ordinance has now been taken over by RSIS. And it requires you to follow that. And it's more stringent than the local ordinances are. One of the things that the state and the RSIS had was the problem with the definition of cul-de-sac. Cul-de-sacs have been length restricted by fire hoses in the past. And how long the fire hoses could be with pressure from the engines and the pumpers. So that limited basically, in addition to single-family houses being built on, one acre, half acre to an acre of land, limited the length of cul-de-sacs just from safety reasons more than anything else and fire aspects. Now, cul-de-sacs are a street without, is defined as a street with simple means, a single means of ingress and egress, and it had to turn around, the design of which was varied. The design is now just not a bulb of a cul-de-sac, but you could have a hammerhead, you could have extra spaces painted so that no one will park in certain spaces. So you have, the main thing is there's only one way in and one way out of a cul-de-sac. Basically, the problem we have with this project is, there's only, the whole project that exists today now is one single point of entry and exit. And since there's only one point of entry and exit, it operates as a cul-de-sac. Now, the problem with that, how many cars can you, how, how big of a cul-de-sac can you have? The residential site improvement standard people have decided that if you have a stub connection, you can use that stub connection to expand, hook into it and expand your number of dwelling units that go in and out of this development. The development usually is, it's a large development and comes in with a plan, a general development plan. That general development plan usually shows where the streets are going to go, how the construction traffic will go, how the how the roadways will be interconnected, how the traffic will affect that. And the whole idea is that the plan requires many years to accomplish. So it's not accomplished in a single year. Since it's going to take a couple of years, those plans will guarantee that the water will be there, the sewage will be there, and the roadway connections will be there. This project has been built up, but when it was built up, it did not follow the rules for a general development plan. And the owners of the property decided what they would do was build out one of the sections and the connections and interconnections were sold off with part of the land. So there was no interconnections in the future. There were no water plans made up. No one knew where the water would come from. That, the plant, mark on the plan, that is something that will be done later. Well, the RSIS says you're supposed to do all these things now, prior to giving preliminary approval. Now, that makes it a lot different. There have been cases that have come out that have indicated that if you have a property and you had interconnections to that property and subdivide it off, and you didn't maintain control, you did not maintain control of that, those interconnections, then, then you have a problem. And it's not for the courts to resolve that type of a problem or for the boards to resolve the problem. The developer has to resolve the problem by having interconnections in the future built into his program development. And if it's not done, then he has to work it out with the owners of the land. So those owners of the land now have to be part of the application because they are agreeing in, by, by this application, if they are part of it, to make and allow the connections. So you have problems with interconnections in this site and you have a project that took many, in taking many years, but does not have the interconnection. So one of the things that you're going to have, if you're going to have a project that has interconnections, those interconnections have to be made prior to the application. You have to have a sealed survey that shows the it shows the land and it shows all the land with concrete monuments so that everyone knows where the property lines and boundaries are, for sure. And in addition to that, where, more importantly, where the accesses and restrictions that are on that land go and where they're noted. In other words, if you have a, you have a project and that project calls for a roadway interconnection, that roadway interconnection has to have an agreement with the prior property owner and the new property owner when it's sold. And then when it's part of a subdivision and something subdivided off. If you own it all and you subdivide it off, you have to maintain access. You can't just go get the access back again when you give it up. You have to guard it for it or whatever if you're a landowner. So you can't, the courts said they don't feel that they should be watering and condemning land to make access if in fact the landowner already had control of those access but didn't utilize them and maintain those controls in the future. This application is, is also interesting because of the number of trips. The number of trips are divided out by the average daily trips. The average daily trips are used to determine the length of cul-de-sac if you, and the type of road go together. So it's the type of cul-de-sac, how long the cul-de-sac is, and how many trips are going to go on to that cul-de-sac. Once you understand how many trips the cul-de-sac can handle, then you can see where these trips are going to be going. In this instance, all the trips that come into the site have to come out to the intersection of Beagle Rock and Oval Road. So if there's an accident on Oval Road or a tree comes down after it's struck by lightning, it's reasonably occurred, and you can't clear it, then there's no way to get in and out. If you have a steep driveway, a steep concern like you do on the cul-de-sac that goes out to, there's another one in the drive, you find out you have a problem there because of steep grade. If the grade is, the grade is limited to a maximum of 10% in the RSIS standard. They don't really give variances for that, so you'd have to get a variance for steep slope if you can get one. The steep slope is a problem. 10% grade is where the problem starts seriously. At 10% grade, icy covered, snow-covered roadway or slushy-covered roadway creates a condition that there's no friction and you lose contact with the surface of the road at that time. So what happens is, a vehicle coming down a slope of 10 degrees cannot stop on that 10-degree slope. It has, so what has to happen, it has to be a flat spot before, at the end of that to allow the vehicle to stop. If the car is going down the slope and comes in at a speed, there's no way to stop it at the bottom. Now, that has happened in many driveways and many people have tested this. And at one time, there was a project in Malwa where they wanted a driveway put on and three township engineers, traffic engineers, testified as to the slope requirement. Slope requirement by the three traffic engineers was 10% grade with 100% level area before getting through the intersection.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, it's almost impossible to hear because of the ventilation going on. In this instance, since it's not very hot... In this instance, since it's not very hot, we possibly shut it because I frankly can't hear myself.
You turn it off, please.
Okay, we'll take care of it. Mr. Lutworny, hang on, hang on a second. Take a break. You want some water?
Yeah.
You want, yes? Okay.
Is soda, is soda water soda?
That's what seven, that's.
That's pleasant, probably wait, because here's Rose Marv, yeah.
Thank you.
What it's now?
Perfect timing. Thank you. As I was saying, as I was saying, the slope of 10% is very critical. And the slope that's out there now is over 10%. So it has to be re, redone and has to maintain that. Otherwise, you have to get a variance from the state as opposed to getting a variance from this board because this board doesn't have that power anymore. It used to have the power, but it's the power for parking spaces, parking variances, et cetera, is now switched over to residential site improvement standard board, which is not necessarily the best. Now, the slopes on this site are problematic because you have over 10%, not just at the one cul-de-sac leaving the site, but at within, within various sections of roadway that we have on, identified on slides and we could show you. But the main thing to know is that they have accesses. None of the accesses are present except the existing Oval Road, Eagle Rock Avenue intersection. That's the only intersection that has access to the outside world, we could say, because everything else is blocked off. It's either emergency exit only or it's, it's proposed as an exit and none of them are exits. There are no other exits or entrances. And since there are no other entrances or exits, interconnecting to another road out, there has to be something done. One thing is you have to lower the volume that's going to be adjusted. We say, well, what's the volume that's being put out? The average daily trip is what's used to maintain a rural type setting in an area by the residential site improvement standard people. There are approximately existing 2,377 annual daily trips. Average daily trips. And the new trips that are being put in are 2,000, 5,105 average daily trips. So we're seeing that with the total new trip is almost almost double what's there now. So you're doubling the traffic and there's a traffic signal that was proposed in the previous traffic report. This application does not call for a traffic signal. It doesn't call for any improvements that they're going to do on that intersection. It doesn't say it's going to pay for the traffic signal. It says the traffic signal will be provided, but it doesn't say with who's going to provide it or what amount will be paid by the developer as opposed to to the township. In addition to that, there's an additional signal at Eagle Rock and That's the one that wants to continue with the road. I just wanted to see the next one that's down further to the left. At Laurel. Well, it does, it has something to do, but you have to improve the signal at Laurel as well. So Laurel has to be improved as well. And there's no there's no approval for this light at, at Oval and Eagle Rock. Since there's no approval, it has to be approved. And there's a question because the distance that Laurel is from it is not that substantial. And since it's not that substantial, there's a question as to how it would operate. The first thought was it would be operated by putting the roads into coordinated phasing. Coordinated phasing is normally done, but if this light is less than 1,000 feet from the next exit, next intersection, interconnecting those lights is not something that works. So the new manual, manual on new traffic control devices, which is supposed to be followed by the RSIS, indicates that if the distance between signals is 1,000 feet or less, that a signal shouldn't be put in. So now you'd have to get approval from them of breaking the MUTCD rules, which are the law of the state by Title 23. They refer that to Title 23 that if there's, if in the MUTCD, it has to be followed as much as possible by the New Jersey state, which includes municipalities as well as the state. So there's a question because Laurel is only 750 feet from the intersection that serves this entire section. And that traffic is going to double or more. It probably comes out triple as a tactic since the numbers of trips that have come out are in the new total is 5,106, existing at 2,377. So you can see that that distance, it's almost, it's almost triple the traffic at at that intersection at Oval Road. Since it's almost triple the traffic and there's no indication that a traffic signal is acceptable or has approval from the state or from the MUTCD by the RSIS, there's a question whether that intersection will be able to handle the traffic. Now, the question that comes up is, well, the RSIS says in the interpretation that if a intersection, if an intersection has a stub connection or a connection that goes to another street and you put it in, you don't have to count the existing traffic. Well, that works fine for small intersections. If you have a cul-de-sac with five or six houses and you add and make it seven houses, you don't really need any, or eight houses or nine houses. You don't have many problems for one intersection, one cul-de-sac with one bulb on it and you make a small change. But if you have something that creates a substantial input, a substantial, see what the word exactly. If it has a substantial impact, then you have to include the existing traffic into that traffic to see what the input would be. This was not done on this application. The volumes are almost tripled and yet since, well, they were tripled, input was not gathered on all of them. And what they did was they indicated what the input would be for the project with the volume, but not with the volume plus the existing volume, but just the proposed volume alone. You need to look at the proposed volume as well as the existing to see what the input, impact is from the changes. And that has to be done yet. In addition, there are numerous site problems. Site disaster problems caused by the slopes, the steep hills and the curves. You have cars that are parked on a curve that are parked perpendicular to the curb on some of the projects, some of the buildings. You have slopes that go into the garage that are in excess of 10%. You have a major problem with sidewalks. Well, sidewalk problem is one because the driveways have such steep slopes on them, and the roads have steep slopes on them. At the driveways and at the areas where the interconnections are, the roadway itself are over 10% in grade. And if the roads are 10% in grade, the question is, what do you do with the sidewalk? You can't put it at 10% because the maximum ADA allows you is 5%. So if ADA calls for five and RSIS gets 10, you have a problem and you need sidewalk on both sides of the street according to the RSIS guidelines. But the RSIS guidelines are the rule, not the guidelines anymore. So instead of just getting a, a variance or a design waiver from the municipality, you have to go to the RSIS board with your changes, which makes it a little different. As opposed to the power the board had previously, you could just you can give them a variance or you can give out a parking variance. You can't give out parking variances anymore. The variances are for parking variances, they're not supposed to be given by the municipality. They had to be given by the residential site improvement board. And we will quote some of that on the, on the on the screen for you so you can get a look at the exact wording. Because most people have not coped with the fact that you have to have certain water allowance, certain li- light allowances. There's no light studies that are done on this to determine if lighting was needed or not. But couple, there are numerous locations also that guide rails required because of the steepness. The idea to put guide rails in the residential development is unusual. And it doesn't usually occur except in large drainage basin where parking lots nearby. In this instance, we have the requirement for guide rail in numerous locations where there's over a four foot drop from the edge of the road. It requires guide rail. Let's go back a minute to the left turn lane on Eagle Rock at Oval. There's a requirement for left turn on, on Eagle Rock as well as on Oval. Separate left turn lanes are required. The roadway amply, has ample width to provide them, but there's nothing in the development that calls for it except in the analysis that was made in the traffic report, put them in, but they weren't called for in, on the plan. So the applicant is required, requested to put in, was requested by his own traffic people to put it in. Not exactly, but he just made that analysis and put those improvements in to show a better level of service. But the better level, level of service doesn't exist unless those plans are put in. Because the plans that are there now, without a signal, without a left turn lane on both Oval and on Eagle Rock, without those turning lanes available, this project shows a complete degrading of level of service. But that doesn't happen when you make the improvement. But the improvements are made in the traffic report, but they're not made on site plan. And they're not made in any developer's agreement, which is what probably should be provided. If there's a developer's agreement between the township and the applicant, that would almost bypass the residential site improvement people. There a lot of the traffic that exists, all the traffic that exists is going to have to go down through the existing development to get to intersection of Oval and Eagle Rock. There's no other way to go. The, the other place is shown on the plans, but they're not applicants and they're not co-applicants and they have not needed or conveyed any access through their property to this applicant. So they can't have access to anything else. And when they do put in the the traffic the way it is, that one, one road going out, there is a requirement for traffic calming measures. And there's a problem because in that area, when you get into the older development, there were no sidewalks provided and no parking on the road. So there's a lack of parking. Once you come into that, there'll be a lack of parking and a lack of a lack of sidewalk. Their sidewalks are interesting. And they're interesting because in the proposal, sidewalks are required by ADA. The sidewalk width by ADA has to be five foot every 200 feet to allow wheelchairs to pass. This sidewalks are not that, were not taken care of on both sides of the street. And they were also not enough to complete with the ADA guideline. ADA guidelines also call for an accessible route from the from the room to the garage and to, this is interesting, ADA calls for it to be calls for it to be between, an accessible route between the the person's room and every other facility on the site, which means you have to have ADA compliant routes from the apartments to all the other apartments, as well as to the dog panel and the garage. The garage is interesting because it calls for, to meet the garage parking requirements, tandem parking was put in. Nowhere in the residential site improvement standard is tandem parking called for. The only place, the only measurement the residential site improvement standard have that refers to any parking space size is nine foot by 18 foot. They don't call for tandem. They don't call for anything else. Tandem itself, we usually recommend it as valet parking. If there's not valet parking, it's very difficult to handle electric vehicle parking, which is required by another statute in the New Jersey deal, New Jersey, which is on, I don't recall the name of that statute, but it's in, it's mentioned by your board engineer as well, which was a good point. It's not called, it's called for by statute, but it's not called for on plan. So that has to be included in. So basically what we have now, there's a plan that has no access to the outside. It kept through one roadway that would exit that Eagle Rock Avenue. There's no construction circulation plan. Now, if there was a a plan, a guidance plan, a development plan, whatever you want to call it, we call for and have a construction circulation plan, a regular circulation plan, a water and sewage circulation plan. It would have, it would have all these different plans. That would be the, the reason for that is that the developer know how and when he's, what he's going to be required to put in and his off-track contribution that he would have to make to upgrade anything that, so that his development can be handled. But that, and more importantly than that, it not only guarantees that the plan is workable by both the developer and by the municipality. The municipality can't be called on the last minute and say they need to float a big bond to create water supply for another project that should have been provided in the beginning phases. Next thing we were doing is looking at the street width. Most of the street width most of the street width call for a 24 foot travel with with no parking. Some places where they have parking, it's perpendicular parking, which we don't recommend at all on a curb especially. Not on the main corridor. And they're there in a couple of places. Another thing is side triangles. The reason to have side triangles is to make sure that there's long enough site distance for a person to pull out of the garage or driveway. Because of that and because of the necessity of it, side triangles are called for in the completion list. Usually boards give variances or design waivers on a site plan, usually that's given and say that's a condition of preliminary of the residential site improvement standard call for a application to be a complete application with everything in it so that it can be just approved or disapproved. And there's no, nowhere did I see anything on, on some of the things that are required that I see like with site distance and side triangles, did anything go to the residential site improvement board for approval for? Because that's not a de minimis exception. Well, let's get to de minimis exceptions. De minimis exceptions are noted in relief letters. Those de minimis inspections, first de minimis. De minimis means very small. Legally, it's a legal term that says it's less than one tenth of a penny, which is not very large is the legal term that you find in some of the laws of law. However, they give examples of de minimis exceptions in the interpretation documents that come in, and that includes things like type of curb, type of piping, whether you're going to use concrete or PVC, things like that. It doesn't include major things. It doesn't include something like leaving out a traffic signal or leaving out a guide rail. Those things are not de minimis. There are errors because there's just not there and that's not supplied. There was no air quality study performed. Usually with a parking garage at over 100 cars being parked require air quality analysis in the environmental impact statement. But I didn't see anything like that here. Let me sort of wrap this up a bit before we go to slides. It includes that the traffic from over that roadway, the death of traffic. We're adding double what's there now. So we're talking about triple the traffic. And tripling the traffic out of one exit, it's always problematic with no other exit, approved exit. We have a problem. The intersection of Eagle Rock and Oval Road has to be signalized and it has to be included as an individual item, preferably with plans and a in a report that indicates that the signal is warranted at that intersection. And that should be done, otherwise larger, even larger geometric improvements may be required. And the road itself has at Eagle Rock, everything goes down to Eagle Rock and that one intersection. And that intersection has to be signalized. Oval Road, Oval Road has to be signalized. And it has to be included with a warrant analysis and a funding plan. Who's going to pay for it? It's indicated that in the first traffic study, it was indicated that it was warranted. But that warrant never addressed the thousand foot proximity rule that's in the M E T C D, which was passed, I think in December of last year. So that was not looked at. In addition, all the through traffic was not taken into consideration with improvements that can be made for sidewalks. Some of the sidewalk improvements that are not called for. And the applicant has put in a road that we think is deficient in width. Places where a fire could break out should be addressed. The conundrums of fires, forest fires in the state recently. And we had a problem here at this site, not with a forest fire, but with a lightning strike of a tree that closed Oval Road for a couple of hours and there was no way to get in and out. Now, that's an important thing. I approved once a project that had only one way in and out. And there was an accident on that intersection. And it was only nine, I think it was nine to 10 single family dwelling units. But even though there's only nine or 10, the accident occurred at, at the street, blocking the bulb of the intersection, blocking the intersection so that nobody could drive in or out with emergency vehicles. The resident from that place came out. And when he came out, he saw the accident result and his daughter was in the car in an accident. He immediately had a heart attack and the emergency forces could not get in to the site. And since they couldn't get into the site, he died and his daughter lived with minor injuries. But there's always a need once in a while for emergencies that you can't control. Forest fire, collision, what if there's, you're going to triple the volume, you're going to have a problem with more accidents because the more turns and more infractions, interferences between vehicles you have, the more traffic accidents you have. It's just a proven study. The road slopes are higher than the residential improvement standards allow. Now, the road slopes in the whole area are problematic. When it rains, the road acts as open ditches and the water doesn't go into the catch basin, it goes by them because of the slope. If you have a slope of 10% going down the road and the cross slope is 2%, the volume is going to go down as opposed to over into the catch basin. So when you get to the bottom of the hill, the catch basin stops, but the water keeps going, creates flooding conditions. So you have to handle that. One of the ways to handle it is to have the road that goes down have a level spot in it and do the level spots almost like a swell across the road to lower and also work with the cross slopes. Have a higher cross slope than the normal two and a half percent, which is the standard standard crossroad on DOT and on local roads. So you'd have to have that modified to help remove the flooding that is occurring now. And if you go to Upton Road, you can see that it's a 40 foot paved roadway with minimal cross slope. So that road from that area creates a lot of flooding. And the slopes are quite obviously a problem when you see some residential homes in Verona have guide rail and have to go back across the front lawn to get up to their garage and they have guide rail on the front lawn. I've never seen that before in a residential house. Where you have guide rail on the front lawn to keep people from falling off the driveway that they go into their garage. The important point to make is that the slopes are so severe that some additional design has to be put into the roadways and the designs have to be modified. And they have to be done to meet RSIS standard and ADA standard and F H W A standard. And there are no, and other standards for the electric vehicle charging stations that have to be import as part of the application. So all these things are missing. And if they're missing, the board can't really give them a vote to say that this isn't an acceptable thing. You have to really go to ADA on some of them. And they don't give variances in the ADA for sidewalk locations in that, and they're not there. The sidewalks are called for in RSIS on both sides of the street. Go to the density. And the density is medium to heavy, depending upon the amount of land that's going to be dedicated as open space. So if the open space area is minimized in dedication, it creates a medium density, but it the sidewalks are so short and flat that it doesn't make any difference. They still need the same amount of sidewalk on the medium density for the roadway width as you do normally. But it doesn't really say that it's going to give you a way out by, by having a medium of high density. Back in a memo that I did, I wrote down under attachment B, a list of discrepancies from where there are problems where the RSIS does not met, where the RSIS requirements are not met. And to tell you the truth, in all honesty, in all the years that I've been practicing, I've never seen an application so incomplete before, missing so many things for completions where there's no, there's no excuse, there's no side triangles, there's no pollution, there's no indication where the water is going to come from. There's no letter that says the water is available. There's no applicant agreeing with their access. The access points are random access points that was agreed because there's no, this developer doesn't control any of the access points and in places he does control some of the access. The neighboring towns or owners have restricted it and have not allowed it. And it does say in the RSIS that if in fact an application does not does not does not have everything you need and it shouldn't be deemed complete. But the more important thing is the residential site improvements take away the, will do it later on the, on the final or preliminary approval. We will, we will do it under preliminary approval. We'll do it as a condition of preliminary. Those things are not there now. You have to go in for preliminary, if you want to get an application approved and you don't want to follow the RSIS, then you're going to have to go and go to Trenton and make an application. And it's not under a de minimis exception. All these things are not de minimis exceptions. There's so many problems that I mentioned more than a dozen and there's more than a dozen I have left. There are pages of things that are still open items. And the entire road system has to be redesigned. It's going to lead to flooding the way it is now and it's going to flood across and down to the existing roads and the adjoining developments. Because there's no indication that anybody is changing the site, the grade. Maybe we could go through the slides now.
Can I just have one moment, please?
Mr. Frank.
You know, I have a question for you if you don't mind. Please, attachment. Attachments. You mentioned attachment B, I don't have. Do you have attachment B? Could you show it for me? Is that it here? Oh, that attachment B list is the list right here? Or the list is up here? No, that's your background. Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I'm just missing a page, I'm trying to clarify.
No slides. No slides. It'll be, it'll be on the record, no slides, we're done.
Can't hear you. You have, well, you should, you have to see the other side. Two hours. Yeah, I would. I don't think you should, but. Let me take a minute to see how many there are. Okay, gentlemen, gentlemen, gentlemen. You have attachment B, please. I could not find attachment B when I had it. Okay, great. Actually, you have attachment B. Okay. Now, I need to see the slides. Show me the slides. Well, hang on. I think I can shorten the slides, but I need a minute to worry. One of you can come out and guide me.
Oh, we're going to take a four-minute break.
You're on. Back on the render. Thank you. Seth Brown.
Thank you. There is part of the report is a PDF slideshow. However, as it turns out, Mr. Livonia gave his verbal report first, which he was using and following along his written report. The PDF was illustrative and going through it at your request, Mr. Chairman, I realized we really didn't need to use it specifically. They're useful exhibits. They highlight the different parts, but we don't need to go into it now. So let me just ask Mr. Livonia, there's a PDF presentation presented along with your report. Is that correct?
Yes.
And did you and your firm create that PDF presentation?
Yes.
And is that PDF presentation illustrative of the elements of your written report that you discussed in your testimony?
Yes, it does.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mr. Chairman, so we will be offering.
So you want the slideshow to be labeled the next exhibit?
No, I think it should be the last of this series. So I think we should go into that right now before any other questions across. So we just identify the report. So Mr. Livonia, I'm sorry.
Let me just say something for the record. We did mark Mr. Weiss's letter as O twenty seven. So our next exhibit marking will be O twenty eight. And tell us what you'd like it to be.
Okay, so O twenty eight, I'm thinking we should have O twenty eight, A, B, C, D, et cetera. Just for clarity. Now, if you want a different way, that's fine. What I see here is a main report dated August twenty two, twenty twenty five. And that consists of a total of thirty one pages.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Livonia, is that your initial document? I'll show you what I have. This is the main report. Is that correct? This document? Okay, so I would like, oh, he said correct. I'd like to offer, I'm good. I'd like to offer the initial report of thirty one pages, that's one document, as exhibit O twenty eight. Now, I want to be certain there is a slideshow. And I think that should be O twenty eight B.
O twenty eight B?
I'm sorry, A.
Okay.
And so that would go into evidence as O twenty eight A as an apple. Now. There were, excuse me, there were. Was this whether here, let's just cover that. We're going to do that. I'm trying to see if there's another document you refer to because I was given several documents. I was given this document here on utilities memo. That was already in evidence. Okay, great. Yes. And this document here on the
Who's are these things?
This document here. Was this used today by Mr.? Was this used today by Mr. Litwania?
Well, why would we label the rest of it crap?
I'll do this picture.
Oh, what the hell? This is like a letter to Joe.
It's just lost. I'll just take.
Is a number of reports that say draft across them in the packet also? Are these reports to be published or not?
I don't think that the one that was submitted today, exhibit oh twenty eight. Yeah, no, I think I did send one to you in error. The document we just marked oh twenty eight.
Okay, so let's be, let's be sure. Take a look at those reports, see what you want to be posted and what not posted. So we get everything right. Okay? I'm gonna give them all that and let's, let's figure this out. So everything else. Yeah. All the draft reports, all the draft reports over there.
So where you saying the word draft? This one's on the draft.
No, these.
I can see that far.
This one is.
So I look like a blur to you when we're talking? Okay, good.
Without my glasses.
Who's, who's this?
That was the other guy. No, the other guy.
Oh, you just submitted this.
That was the last week guy, Rowan.
Like they're part of days.
But this is.
Is that part of the planner who's? Well, this is the former guy.
This is the guy from Rowan. Yeah, this is the guy from Rowan.
One is twenty twenty, but the other two are twenty twenty two.
Oh, this may be Roman. I'll have to clarify that way that I can. That wasn't.
That was given.
Yeah. So you're, where were you saying drafts? I'm sorry.
It says draft.
Oh, in that.
Yeah, all that.
What a big year.
Hang on a second. That's not meant to be in evidence and I don't think he, I don't think he actually discussed.
Guys, members of the board, guys. There's documents that say draft on them. Please follow documents and hand it back over this. We're gonna get it back to official.
Okay. Oh, this was about Bill Green last.
Okay. We're gonna give you all the reports that say drafts on.
Mr. Green's here.
There's more coming. Why don't you give it to you? Okay, let's give this to your attorney and let you.
That's what we have. No, no, no.
He leaves two others.
Okay, no, no, we're good. We're good. You pick that. That was.
We're gonna give you all the reports that say draft, so we don't have them.
Based on things that are in the slide breakout.
It's in evidence.
Yes, it's in evidence. Yes. Okay? All great.
So. I mean. We're actually looking at the mountain. He was here last week, so. What if I time look?
He always brings that.
Getting rid of everyone that said drag. In your packet then.
No, no, Brian, it means this. Brian, it means that. So. On Mr. Green.
Put it back on while no one's speaking.
I mean, if you, if you want to question some of that, I can bring him back.
If, if.
I understand exactly what you're doing. I appreciate.
Confused.
I don't know why Joe gave you all that. Okay, this one. This. That was just a couple of the jobs. Okay, this one. Yes, it does. It's like, I correct? Okay.
So what I have.
No one's hearing this conversation.
Yeah, you have to hold it a certain way here. That's why the states was.
This one, I believe, I believe this one was Will Green. He told me this is what he gives. He's, he's a part of. Yeah, he signed. This was his report. We can mark this as evidence in case we get. One we can market it, we cannot make.
Okay, uh-oh, no submission.
Several board members just said to me they would like to ask questions, but it's under PDF. We could bring, say, Bill Green back, or to do that. With PDF. By the ones you thought we didn't need to know now, which I kind of agree with, but the one is. So I can arrange, say, for this agreement.
That's what?
No, exactly. Oh, sorry, I was saying.
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, not say, right, if people wanted to ask questions based on the slideshow or at all, and you need someone else to come back, I'm sure we didn't. Yeah, I didn't mean to mistake.
Yeah, yeah. I only had a chance to glance at this when we started, but I also glanced at the draft stuff and I couldn't.
Like a free test.
Really, just driving by.
That's why those. He wasn't last.
Believe that that was. For our order them, but we can market.
I can also, he's here. What you testified from.
So I'll show a message.
I need to clarify this.
Now, tell them we're trying to.
This is part of the slideshow. Could I see what you have for the slideshow? Was it possible? I believe this was supposed to be.
In the thirty second increments, right? So again, so now people be looking at.
Uh, figure one, oh, it's right. Okay, this is just a copy. I don't know why it's. So it's in there. And this one, let's see if it's in, should be. Unless it's Dennis.
Hard stop at ten.
Better second.
Repressed by your dress.
I think this is Dennis's.
Turn the air back off.
Okay. There's any errors, we'll work it out, but I believe. Okay, so, and if any board members want. Yeah, what's here?
Yeah.
But he's gonna. Try the other one.
Just stuff that he pretend.
Okay, so we're good.
Now seems like it's twenty eight eight.
No, that's worse. All right.
Bill. This was your report the last time we testified.
Okay, none of you can try and escape.
Yes. So we're getting off this one. They asked a quick question just now.
Okay.
Understood. Okay, great. Thank you. Are there gonna be questions from the board now?
Okay, I think we're very close now. Okay? I think we're very close.
But this is a final, right? Report final. Is this your final request? Why not? Are you just testifying without a report? So you trust. You didn't use a report.
Good. Okay, thank you very much, everybody, for indulgence here in the meeting and on Zoom. We had some administrative things to clear up. And at this time, we're going to ask Mr. Litwania some questions. Mr. Blocker?
Okay, that's fine. Okay, hang on.
Mr. Blocker.
Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Litwania, for coming. Uh, I know it's a long night and I know you don't live close, so I'm gonna be pretty brief. I just have just a couple of clarifications slash objections. One, a lot was made about, uh, is very much unknown about the traffic signal at the corner of Eagle Rock and Oval Road. You know, we've stated very clearly for the record, it's in the settlement agreement between the township and my client. My client is one hundred percent committed and obligated, and this approval, any approval would be contingent upon my client obtaining approval from Essex County because it is a county intersection that's governed by Essex County, and my client is obligated to fund that full improvement as an off-track improvement. So I just wanted to state that for the record. Unless somebody's gonna disagree with me, I think that's been pretty clearly established. Two, I just want to ask Mr. Litwania, he talked about a lot of having the rights, you know, to access and come off the site. Mr. Litwania, do you know who owns the emergency access lots up on Hal Drive? I forget the block, but I know there are lots eight and nine. It's actually block one seventy nine, one seventeen, lots eight and nine. Do you know who owns those lots?
I believe the applicant had control over the lot, but there was no way for the people to drive off the lots because there were there were restrictions that were never reported in a survey.
Okay, what restrictions are you referring to?
That people from this lot would be able to use that lot.
Okay, did you review those IH one zoning ordinance? In, in West Orange?
There was.
I, I, he's testified.
At the ordinance requirement.
Okay, my question was, did you, did you review the IH one zoning ordinance in West Orange?
I did not use it myself. I talked to somebody who did.
Okay, who did you talk to?
Uh, Joe Filipano and the planner.
Who, Joe Filipano? Are you talking about Joe Penulo?
Yeah.
Okay, who's?
He also said, and the planner, so I think he's referring in his answer to.
Please let, let him finish.
Let, let him testify.
Okay, what did Mr. Penulo tell you?
That the lots were owned by the property owner of this lot, but that there was no access to the other roads because there were restrictions in the original approval of the lot.
Did, did you ask? Sorry.
There were restrictions on the use of the lot for people leaving these lots to go through the other ones.
And did Mr. Penulo provide you with those alleged restrictions?
I did not receive a copy from him.
Did you ask Mr. Penulo for those restrictions?
No.
Okay. For the record, section twenty five dash nineteen E six of the IH one zoning ordinance states, and I quote, "Emergency access ingress and egress shall be permitted to block one seventy nine point seventeen, lots eight and nine to the north and Bayowski Road to the south," end quote. Have you ever seen that ordinance provision before?
No.
Okay. Oh, that client has an easement through the West Essex Highlands condominium to access the subject property via Oval Road.
I would object to the phrase easement. It's not clear whether this is something that the developer gave himself on those other roads. So I, no, I really.
Okay, rephrase.
I strike, I strike.
To traverse the West Essex Highlands condominium from Oval Road to access the subject property.
I'm not aware that they're completely unconstrained, but that would show up in a survey map would show the ownership and the cross.
Did you?
Not provided.
Did you do any title search?
That's supposed to be done as part of the application.
Okay, well, this board does not decide ownership issues off-site. I, I understand, but the objective group may very well argue that we don't have the right to access our own property, but that would definitely be for a different form. And I'll also state for the record, my client has the legal right to traverse Oval Road to get to Warner Road, to get to this site. But you've never seen any documents that indicate that? Okay.
Well, they, Mr. Plaka is.
Wait, 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 oh, go. Okay, hang on.
Mr. Plaka is gonna make that representation, and at some point, that ought to be proffered to the board.
To, to, with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, this board does not adjudicate ownership issues. They just don't.
Ownership, but it can't approve applications unless there's evidence that there's a proprietary interest in the lands that must be traversed. The board can't act on an application unless the applicant shows it has the right to do certain things.
So the applicant, we will direct the applicant to show rights to, uh, those lots.
Been happy to do so.
Thank you.
Just wanted to clarify.
No, absolutely, absolutely.
I was gonna sit here for nineteen meetings and spend the time and resources to prosecute this application if we didn't have the rights.
I am. I agree. We'll ask that you provide that, please.
You can do that.
Thank you.
Um, on September eleventh of last year, Carl Penkey, our traffic engineer, testified. Did you review all of his testimony?
Yes.
Okay, um, so is, is it fair to say that Mr. Penkey testified that these roads and maybe even our engineer, Mr. Anderson, testified that these roads were designed as minor collector roads?
I don't recall right now.
Okay. Could you, I'm sorry, did you say you don't recall?
Right.
Okay. Do you know what the maximum grading permit is for a minor collector road under RSIS?
I believe it's five percent.
Okay, I, I would disagree. I would submit that it's ten percent, but that's.
Okay, you'll have to have your expert.
We can, Mr. Penkey back at the next meeting.
Just for the record, I couldn't quite hear. Could, could the witness repeat his answer? I know Mr. Plaka disagrees. I couldn't get.
Said five percent.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
Do you know what the grading of the road on Hal Drive is?
Excuse me?
Do you know what the grading of the road of Hal Drive is?
No. I'll be looking it up.
You mentioned something about tandem parking, how RSIS doesn't address it, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, does RSIS prohibit tandem parking?
It only allows nine by eighteen, nine by, six by eighteen spaces, and tandem space would not.
So your testimony is that RSIS does not allow tandem parking. It's okay, we can disagree. I just want to get your testimony clear for the record.
Well, there's nowhere that it allows, nowhere does it allow a different size. So by inference, it doesn't allow any other different sizes, it would be allowed.
So is your testimony that RSIS does not permit tandem parking?
Yes, it does not. It does not, by inference, allow it. And I think I misspoke previously.
You said you reviewed Mr. Penkey's testimony, correct?
I did read it.
And, and what was his, uh, conclusion is to the level of service at the intersection of Eagle Rock and Oval Road once the traffic improvement is installed?
Basically, level service C or better.
Mr. Penkey said that?
What?
Mr. Penkey said that it was a level of service of C? I, 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 we'll, we'll bring him back. I'll, I, I would beg to differ. His testimony says something else, but that's okay. Did you review the settlement agreement between the township and my client?
No.
Did you review the stormwater plan?
No.
But you did testify that you thought there would be flooding?
There would be what?
I, I thought you said you were concerned that there would be a, a stormwater runoff issue.
Yeah.
Because of the roads. But how, how can you make that conclusion if you didn't review the stormwater plan?
I looked at the plans.
Uh, my first question was, did you review the stormwater plan that's part of?
I just looked at them to see certain parts of it. I didn't review them.
Okay, you didn't review the whole thing?
I didn't review the whole thing in detail.
Okay, which parts did you review?
The slopes and cross slopes.
Of the roads.
What?
Of the roads.
Yeah.
Okay, did, did you review the, any detention basins, catch basins, any things of that nature? Where the stormwater is designed to go under the plan? Did you review any of those elements?
Objection, the witness didn't speak to those issues. He spoke to a very limited question in terms of, uh, one component of the road structure. He wasn't speaking of the whole stormwater.
Said it was gonna flood.
But he, he did say flood, he did say flooding of the roads, and he specifically said that the water was gonna come down and go past the retention basins. That was his direct testimony. That was his direct testimony. So I'm gonna allow this.
Okay, and are my client obtained DEP approval for their stormwater design? You weren't aware of that? Okay.
Just to remind the board, that matter is under appeal.
Yes.
Okay, good luck with that.
So noted.
Did I just hear a good luck?
And, and just one more question. Does the ADA allow sidewalks on a street to follow the road grade? Is that permitted by the ADA?
It's not, it would require, it would require ramping and paving.
Can you point to a particular section of the ADA to support that statement? That's okay. That's okay. I have nothing further at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Klein?
Good evening, Mr. Lutworny. So you said that the traffic signal at Oval Road is not warranted? Or what, what did you, it's, I wrote down a bunch of notes about you didn't think it was warranted, or it wasn't designed? That's, that's where your main contention is, that they don't have an actual plan that shows the design of it?
If not designed, it's not included in.
Microphone, microphone.
You repeat the question.
So when you were talking about the traffic signal at Oval Road?
Yeah.
In the Langin report dated June 19th, 2024, they did a warrant study. They met the eight-hour warrant, the four-hour warrant, and the peak hour warrant. Are you contesting that that's not accurate? That a signal is not warranted?
No, I didn't say it's not warranted.
Okay.
I said it should be shown that it should be warranted. And the warrant analysis wasn't provided as part of this application, is what I said.
It was provided in the June 19th, 2024 traffic report. Did you review that report? The Langin traffic report for this application?
I'm not sure if that's the one I saw that wasn't in. It was in, it wasn't in the hanky one. It was in the previous report.
Previous report from 2006? For this application?
I believe it was prior to this. Carl's report, I don't believe, showed it met the warrant allowance.
I mean, it does. Page 12 talks about the warrants. I mean, it's in there, so all right, it's okay. I don't know what else to say about this. So are you saying that the whole development from Oval Road in is one giant cul-de-sac?
It is.
And what's, how do you define, how do you come up with that?
One way in and out.
That's different. That's a boulevard, that Oval Road should be a boulevard, divided road, so that if there's an emergency on Oval Road, it's divided and people could still get in the out and out the in if they have to. Is that what you meant?
No, it should be designed into the boulevard, but in addition to that, there should be more than one way in and out. Right now, there's only one way in and out.
All right. So you're saying in RSIS, there's a limitation on how many roads you need to get in and out of a development as opposed to one road with a boulevard design?
I'm saying needs, needs more than one way in and out.
I mean, we have, there's emergency access. That doesn't, it's for an emergency, or you're just talking in generalities to operate every day? Two ways or more than one way out?
Open every day.
Every day, okay. Would, would you be able to tell me where in the RSIS it says that?
Is the question, does the RS say there has to be more than one way for everyday use?
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to know where it says that.
It says by inference more than by statement. It says it in the inference.
In inference, all right.
You have to have.
Is there a limitation on the number of units or the number of trips, daily, hourly?
There are limitations by number of trips, not by length.
Not by?
Length of roadway.
Okay.
But in some places, they have a length of roadway, like 1,000 feet maximum.
Right, I mean, a cul-de-sac longer than 300 feet needs a bulb, things like that you're talking about?
Something like that. In addition to that, the the 1,000 foot, what I made.
So you're saying, it's like foothold assessment, but.
Always back with most of residents, multifamily residents.
So you've reviewed the site plan. Are there lengths of road that have no intersecting roads that are longer than 1,000 feet within the development?
Question here is.
One sim, single stem of a road that's greater than 1,000 feet with no intersecting roads?
No, no, what he's saying is, he's saying RSIS.
Are they?
Allow a development with only one way in and out.
That would be the match. Then foothold it back.
What are you saying?
Like, for instance, I'm, I'm looking at what they're proposing. They've got, I mean, I don't even know what I'm looking at here, but all right.
I'm not risking it. I can't, with his performance, I can't risk it.
And, all right, so MUTCD says that traffic signals should not be spaced at 1,000 feet. They should be, what, what's the minimum spacing of two traffic signals?
What is it on this?
No, what is, what is MUTCD say about the spacing of the existing signal at Laurel? What's the closest you can have another signal on Eagle Rock?
1,000 feet.
And we're at 750?
Yeah.
So it says that it's not permitted, or it discourages it?
Said that you cannot use. You're not, you cannot use certain things in your justification. One of the things you can't use in justification is that it will provide a coordination of signals. And if you're using the coordination of signals as part of your justification, then you can't do it. You have to find another justification.
So I don't know if you're aware of a lot of traffic signals just in West Orange in front of the zoo. There's three or four, maybe five that are within less than 1,000 feet of each other. There's others on Northfield that are also close together. Are they illegal signals, or they somehow skirted the MUTCD and they were able to sneak it in there?
Well, they said, the FHWA said in the manual on universal traffic control devices, that, that the justification for warrants for a signal using coordination would not be acceptable if the signals were closer than 1,000 feet because they found coordination doesn't operate well at that distance.
Okay, they're not putting the signal in for coordination. They're putting in the signal to operate the intersection of Oval Road and Eagle Rock Avenue. It met the three of the warrants. So they're putting it in at 750 feet away from Laurel Avenue, but there's a way to coordinate those two signals so they operate properly.
Now, if they, if they use that for a design and for a warrant approval.
No, no, they met the peak hour, the four hour, and the eight hour. They didn't, they didn't put, I know what you're talking about. There's the coordination. I forget what number it is, seven or eight or something on the list. They're not putting it in to get spacing to coordinate two traffic signals.
So the numbers vary according to which warrant you. So if it doesn't meet the volume warrant.
It did.
And if it meets the volume warrants, and it, and it, it's one of the reasons that you're using the warrant for under coordination of signals, then that wouldn't operate. It wouldn't count. The warrant analysis wouldn't be good. In fact, it's gonna ruin the coordination on Eagle Rock.
But if they can coordinate the existing signal at Laurel with the proposed signal at Oval Road, and it doesn't impede the operation of Eagle Rock Avenue, then they can make it work.
They'd have to prove it can work because you don't know. Basically, the manual says you can use it for your justification in the warrant analysis. So you can't use coordination as a warrant. There's the volumes and everything under, under that for your approval of the warrant. Because that close proximity of two streets will cause a problem in your coordination between the next signal down.
Okay.
Well, that's what the book said.
All right. That's it for me.
Thank you, ma'am. If you have any questions, Mr. Lutworny, I would have to move on.
Good evening, sir. My question is about RSIS on ADA sidewalks. You mentioned the sidewalks. Does RSIS state that they have to be on both sides of the road?
Can you repeat that? I'm sorry.
Yes, I. In the RSIS, do they state, do sidewalks have to be on both sides of the road? You mentioned a few terms about sidewalks. Do they have to be on both sides of the road?
I couldn't hear that, Eddie.
Oh, the sidewalks themselves, do they have to be, according to RSIS, do they have to be on both sides of the road?
What happened to them both?
Sidewalks, sorry, sidewalks.
Yes.
According to RSIS?
Being density road, you need sidewalks on both sides. And you need sidewalks on both sides because they changed the signal requirements. And now the signal requirements have to meet ADA as well as FHWA, as well as some other regulations as well. So you're gonna have to have signals that have push buttons that are audible and verbal, and that's newest and best, and then everything has to be accessible with sidewalks on both, on every side and every corner. And it's a real pain because it's geared towards everyone. And the newest regulation came out from December of last year. They're not finalized. The government said, federal government said to follow those regulations because we're gonna institute them all for the push buttons for verbal and for sidewalk sizes and for locations of for locations of the push button.
So in, in this, another question to according to RSIS, in this particular application, are the roads 18 feet or 20 feet?
Could you repeat the whole question? I couldn't hear the first part.
In this report, it talks about the road width. I'm asking, are they 18 feet or 20 feet? Do you know?
I believe I was looking with my report was predicting the use of 24.
Okay. And what should they be? And, and what do you, what are you saying they should be? The road width?
I think in those habitable locations where they have buildings located or closeness to where forest fire might come over the hill, those places, as I said, should have a 32-foot, 30, 32-foot road width.
32?
Because these, the fire department has to put out, like, down, I think you have 28 feet, requirement of 28 feet for that. If you have a 12, 14-foot pass spot. So.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Capford. Do you have any questions for Mr. Lutworny on his testimony?
I do, yeah, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Lutworny. I do have a question about, did you, did you look at the Howell Drive access point?
The what?
At, at Howell Drive, the post-emergency access. Did, did you look at, do you know what the width of that access is or the slope? Did you look at either of those?
I walked it, but I didn't remember, I didn't measure it.
Okay, I just was curious about that. And one other question, did you say that Warner Road was a minor collector? Oh, yeah, did you, I, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if you said, okay. Oh, did, did you?
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I asked if, it might have been someone else who stated this, so I apologize. I thought, did someone say that, that Warner Road is a minor collector? No, did I, did you, okay, okay. I think, I think.
I can make a representation that I was characterizing previous testimony by either Mr. Penkey or Mr. Anderson. I did say, we will bring Mr. Penkey back to clarify, but that the roads that are proposed on the subject property were designed and classified as minor collector roads.
Okay. Okay, then maybe my question would be for Mr. Penkey later. I think, I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chairman Garina, do you have any questions for Mr. Lutworny on his testimony?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr., well, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for your expert testimony. I have a couple of questions for you, sir. One, my one question is, and I ask this a lot of the people making the testimony, have you visited the site and walked the site? I know it's private property, but have you been anywhere within the development zone, the current development zone? When, one, you made your assumptions, you made your calculations. Have you been to the site, sir?
Yes. I walked the site and I've driven it a couple of times.
Well, the site we're talking about, sir, do you know the current development where the current, you know, condominiums and housing and the roadways and where? You know, I know you can't go on to the part where the applicant has, because it's private property, but have you seen the way the development currently exists and its current conditions and its current roadway conditions and traffic movements and such, sir? That's, I just, that's one question.
Yeah. I haven't seen enough already.
You've been there, sir?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just, all right, okay. So if you have it, sir, if I can assume that you haven't been to the development site, the current, what's there now? Your assumptions here, can I say, your, your testimony here is based upon information received from third-party sources other than yourself?
With respect, Mr. Chairman, he was analyzing the reports submitted by the applicant. So naturally, those calculations are from a third party. That was.
That's what I'm just, thank you, Mr. I just wanted to get an idea of where the information came from and how his conclusions were, or his conclusions were arrived at. So, and that's why I'm asking, was he at the site? Has he walked the site and got an eyeball idea of how the traffic flows? What's going on? That's all I'm trying to figure out, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. So, I mean, I don't know, has he, have you, he hasn't been to the site?
Well, he said, he did, he did, the forest or the, the forest. Does, does Mr. Garina mean the forest itself or the development next to?
That he can't go to.
Right, so we come at the development. So the question is, has he been to the development and gone through it?
The current development that's there.
Perhaps the witness could clarify that.
Yes, sir.
Have you been to the development, the association? Gone through it, looked at it, observed its, its current conditions, et cetera?
Existing?
Yes, the existing development.
Yeah.
And how did you do that? Did you walk it? Did you drive it? Did you do a combination of both? How did you, how did you go through the development?
I drove it a couple of times. No, I was either a passenger or I drove it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tuffin. Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Albert, do you have any questions for Mr. Lutworny on his testimony?
Sure, I do. Thank you. First, Mr. Chairman, can we get CME and maybe also initiating to produce a response to the claims that are in both the written report and the PowerPoint? Because there's a lot that relies on.
Yes, we, we're at the end of the meeting before we.
All right.
Yes.
Um, thank you. On page 13 of your written report, where you talk about the emergency access roadways and specifically Howell Drive, regardless of the ownership of those lots on Howell, can you talk a little bit about your specific concerns about the emergency access that you outline in the report?
The specific concern about the lots are that there's stub connections can be reviewed without counting the existing traffic, which is a. interesting point. So if that thing happens, the question is, what volumes would you limit it to? And you'd limit it then to the, if it's a cul-de-sac with a cul-de-sac with a single way in and out and multifamily units, then you'd have a thousand feet length that you can use as a maximum.
So then is is a cul-de-sac also defined as a, I got this one, is a cul-de-sac also a minor collector or are those separate categories of roads?
I'd call it a separate category, and the reason being is that you can have that. It has to have one way in and out. And the collector can have two ways, has two ways, one on either side of the road.
Okay.
Either end. Like if you come to a T-intersection, you can make a right or a left on the collector. So you go a thousand feet down, you come to a stop sign, and then you can make a left or a right. Now, that theoretically being basically like a loop roadway, which is what the applicant has done. But when you loop, all the loops you do, all the loops you have, when you finish the loop, you still come out to one location and it's one big cul-de-sac no matter how you look at it. And if that one road gets blocked, nobody can get in around.
And if it's a cul-de-sac, it has a lower number of units that it can support?
Well, that cul-de-sac may have, usually they have units on it. I don't know if we would not have units, if they didn't have any unit, they couldn't be a thousand, a thousand limitation.
Right, but I guess, I'm asking about on your slides, on page nine of your slides, where you talk about the RSIS limits and the number of units that a cul-de-sac can support, which I don't think you spoke about, but it's in your prepared materials.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'll just note that we didn't use the slides at the chair's request because we wanted to avoid duplication. However, it may be useful to use this one slide if the board member believes there's information that should be addressed.
I, I think I can ask the question if the witness can, you know, refer to the information on it. So the slide is saying that RSIS, according to RSIS and the math that you produce here, that 496 units is more than a cul-de-sac can support.
You have a copy of the slide so you can have it?
He has.
Page your left.
I'm looking at page nine, but it might be, I think it's on multiple pages.
It's page nine. It's in front of the witness.
Thank you.
So I guess I'm curious if you can explain, A, the numbers you're showing here, and based on that, what you think can be, can be supported? And B, if it's not a cul-de-sac and if it is a minor collector, what the numbers would be?
Could we, just since we're addressing the slide and there are many people, nobody can see it except us, could we please put that one page on?
Can you put that one slide up?
Oh, it's, it's page, number nine headed, well, they all have that, page number nine at the bottom. Okay, the, for the record then, the slide is now on the screen. That's page nine of the PDF. That's page nine of Exhibit O28A. I'm sorry, Mr. Albert, could you repeat your question? I interrupted to get the slide up.
Sure. I guess what I'm getting at is the slide is saying that if Warner Road is considered a cul-de-sac, that only 188 units would be supported by a cul-de-sac, and there are already more than 188 units in that location. So I guess I'm hoping, A, you can explain that a little bit better, and B, if it's not a cul-de-sac, if it is, if it is considered a minor collector by whoever the ultimate authority is that decides if it is a cul-de-sac or is a minor collector, what the number of allowable units would be in that case? Because it seems to be important.
What happens is no matter which way you do it, whatever you call it, it's still a cul-de-sac because all the buildings together still come out as a cul-de-sac. There's only one way out and in.
So, so even if it were a much bigger road, if it were much wider and had a divider in the middle and could carry many more vehicles because there's no second exit, it would still be a cul-de-sac and would still be limited to 188 units? Or am I not understanding that?
Well, basically, you can hold more units if you make it a higher scale roadway. But the thing is, no matter how big you make this scale roadway, you have to make it a big scale roadway. You made it a big boulevard all the way from the the end of the existing road all the way out, that would work. It's just that you'd have to demolish a lot of homes to form a boulevard. You couldn't do it. If you were doing this because you had planned development and you planned on putting a boulevard through, then you could be, you'd be able to work it out the way you said.
Okay.
Now, it's past, it's past the point of no return.
Um, I think that's all I've got. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cadoz, do you have any questions for Mr. Lutworny on his testimony?
The witness was saying something.
I'm sorry, Mr. Lutworny, go right ahead, sir.
The other thing is, if in fact if in fact you had a planned development and you put the road in before that, you'd be able to have it, have all the, have most of the planned points revolve, problems revolve around the cul-de-sac and the one exit and entry point. The whole project could be redesigned, it occurred in the first planned development, so that when the developer was finishing it off or beginning it, it would be able to say he was going to use the back and use providing access points for right-of-way for the municipality or for himself, for private roads, so that the roads could be designed according to the, according to the normal planning book. But by leaving out the the design and leaving out the connectivity and creating one big cul-de-sac, it created the necessity for going through other properties to, whether they're his or the condominium, there's an argument about it. Because the residential site improvements standard call for the identification of all the right-of-ways and on, and other things as part of the survey map or a township map. And we asked for a township map to see what, where they stand, and there is no township map. It was supposed to be located on the township map, and it's not there. It's supposed to have a survey that lists all the ownerships to know if the ownerships agree with the project or are part of it or not. And there's no, that's missing. There's just so many things missing that it didn't go into the exact details normally go when the plan is planned. I didn't look for guide rail rings, centivates, guide rail next to slopes that are over three to one. I didn't look at a lot of those things because there's so many of them that it just didn't make sense.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cadoz, do you have any questions for Mr. Lutworny on his testimony?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, thank you, Mr. Lutworny, for your expert testimony, for your presentation and submissions to the board. I guess the first thing is, it's been some time since we've discussed the specifics of the site plan in these meetings, and I don't have the benefit of my previous notes. There are another device. You made allusions to, or you stated several times that a lot of things are missing from the site plan you evaluated. Do you know what that was dated, the site plan that you worked off of here? Because I believe we discussed some of those elements in prior meetings, so I'm just wondering. Okay.
Well, you need the microphone, Tom.
Wait, what website would that be?
Excuse me? We use the ones that were on file for the municipality.
On file from the municipality?
I think he's referring to the planning board website.
Planning board website and the.
There are two on file with the board, just for the record. One originally, and then I believe the last revision date was this past October to reflect the DEP approvals.
Mr. Chairman, I have to say that it may be a factual question to resolve if there were changes that address what Mr. Lutworny has said, we can resolve that at a later time. It may not be fruitful to try to do it. I'm not criticizing questions.
Well, I could clarify that. We just looked and spoke with Mr. Green, who looked at it, and he said he used the, there are two on file with the municipalities. He said, and we looked at both of them.
You looked at both. Okay, so you know, my concern is when you're stating things are missing, are you basing that off the most recently updated plans, which I believe, Mr. Pocky, you can confirm, are inclusive of several suggestions from the board?
Uh, from the board, obviously, we have been through several hearings by October, and we were also on the precipice of, or had received the DEP permits. It might have been before, slightly after. But because of the change in certain designs of the stormwater system, which wound up ultimately getting approved by the DEP, we thought that the correct plans that were with the DEP, that the site plan for this application should reflect it, so the board would have the most up-to-date information.
Okay, thank you. So again, to confirm, I'm sorry, Mr. Lutworny, I want to drill down on this. So many of the, all of the numbers you presented, your evaluation is based off of the most recent uh, site plan dated in October? Or you?
Most recent went on file.
Most recent on file, so but I just want to make certain that any of the representations in your submissions to the board did not, were not based off the previous. If, if, well, they could be based off the previously submitted site plan, but if those, if anything that you commented on was subsequently updated, I want to know that that's the case, that you evaluate, that you evaluated the most up-to-date site plan.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't have the dates.
Okay. Okay. You know, perhaps, perhaps in, you know, when, when the boards experts evaluate, you can make a judgment answer. Okay, thank you. Specifically, when it comes to trip generation, those numbers, I believe the representation for Mr. Affrin was, those numbers were initially presented by the applicant? And you evaluated based on that?
We used the last ones.
Okay, so those were the applicant's numbers?
File showed that we Xeroxed and put it in the tax, in the report, which showed the steep slopes that occur in some of the side triangle distances that are problematic.
I, I'm sorry, I lost, I thought I heard Xerox, but I don't.
Well, we can see it on here. You can't actually. I think the question you were asking was whether or not the trip calculation numbers, where did they come from?
To a certain extent, yes.
Okay, I, I'm just trying to.
In another way, yes, they did.
Right, so in other words.
Where, where did they come from?
One question is, where did the trip calculation numbers come from? Were those from the applicant's report or were those generated separately by Lutworny and Associates?
Yes, thank you for clarifying. Okay.
Mr. Lutworny, could you hold up the microphone, please? Sir?
You have a consensus for that. And.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lutworny. I look forward to our reviewing the response documents that our experts, that the board's experts present.
Thank you. Councilman Perkins, Scott, do you have any questions for Mr. Lutworny on his testimony?
Just a quick one. Thank you for your testimony. Do you have concerns about the walkability of the site? I know you talked about the ADA 5% and the slope not allowing for the RSIS rules. I ask because I know with, with the portables, it's important that they be walkable around the community. Not only the existing community, but it's always best if they are near, you know, important spots.
The ADA requires inaccessible routes, which would mean sidewalks within, within their limits. The 5%.
So, so you don't feel this, this is walkable? This is walkable?
Well, you'd have to design it to be walkable. It doesn't necessarily have to follow the road. And if it's over 5%, you can put a ramp in, but the ramp, I think, can't be more than 7%.
All right. I was just concerned about walkability, and I wanted to see and understand your concern.
Well, it's all ability, so it's problematic.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. McNeil, do you have any questions for Mr. Lutworny on his testimony?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Hazel, do you have any questions for Mr. Lutworny on his testimony?
Not at this time.
I'm sorry, I put the hand down with the cue.
Okay.
Okay, good. Take two. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome back here on Zoom. If, how many, could you raise your hand if you have serious questions for Mr. Litwornia this evening that his testimony has not addressed in your mind?
Questions not comments.
Questions, not comments. Just please raise your hand. We're trying to get an idea of two, okay? Please come up, you can ask Mr. Litwornia. Stat? Okay, next, man in the back, come up with that, no, let me figure it out. Okay. And you come over, do you have a mic over there? You want to come over to the stand over here? Okay, talking to his lapel.
I didn't know what's doing. Don't call him silence.
Yes, ma'am, could you come up here and we're gonna give you a mic? Yeah, come right up here. Yes, thank you.
Say your name for the record.
Yolda Paul, sixty-one Howell Drive.
Thank you, go right ahead.
So I live across from where the emergency exit road will come out, and I'm totally confused. I thought that that was only for emergency vehicles, and I'm sitting here and everyone's talking about it as an access road. Is it an access road or is it for emergency vehicles?
I think, I'm gonna let the applicant's attorney answer that because I think he's gonna be the best person.
I think it's been clear from the testimony demonstrated, it is for emergency access only.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Mr. Whistler? Yeah, yeah. No, no, no questions. Does anybody else have any questions about Mr.? Come right up, sir. Right over here, sir. Oh, right over there.
I just, I need a little clarity.
Yes, sir.
On this two lots up on Howell.
Yes, sir.
That's been referenced to tonight.
Could you, could you give us a name for the record, sir? Your name for the-
Robert Sharon Allen.
Thank you.
From the Highlands. On the two lots up on Howell that they're talking about, that the Will family owns. Those two lots, from what I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, are zoned for one-family homes. Did I hear correctly from their lawyer that they got this somehow, an exception to not building into one-family homes and have that as another exit? Or am I misunderstanding?
Mr. Plucker.
The IH one zoning ordinance with the township adopted in two thousand and twenty permits emergency access use over those two specific lots only. Correct.
Okay.
So so they got an exception to the zoning law. Is that what he said?
No, sir. It is part of the IH one zone. If you go online on our website, the IH one zone is on the planning board's website. You can read everything that's in it.
I hope it's very explicit because it does lack very culture.
Thank you.
More just as a matter of law, so I don't waive any issue. Mr. Plucker's comments about the LH having the impact of the emergency access in the next zone is something we will discuss legally. My silence should not be taken to me, I agree.
We don't, I understand. Thank you. Okay, come right ahead, ask Mr. Litwornia a question.
Dyson, um, Deidra Dyson. I'm on Slayback and Howell Drive. My question is, as far as the emergency access, are we talking fire trucks, ambulance, and police? Are we talking about people needing to leave because Overroad is closed?
I think that's gonna have to be up to the township and how they address what that meant. But we will, we will discuss that before the application is completed. That's a good question. Okay. Come right ahead, say, say your name for the record, please.
Richard Baum. I live in the Grand. B A U M. Okay, so there's currently three hundred and seventy residents in this cul-de-sac, and you guys are talking about adding another five hundred residents. So my calculation says that's about an extra fifteen hundred cars, uh, nine hundred cars and fifteen hundred residents in that area. You know, the traffic on Eagle Rock now-
Sir, 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 ask a question of Mr. Litwornia.
You gotta ask, get to a question. You know, Eagle Rock Oval is a dangerous intersection. My wife broke her neck in a serious accident there in twenty-five, in two thousand and five, and we came to the town and wanted a light at that intersection, and we're told emphatically there will never be a light put there. It's too close to Schuersburg.
Sir.
What has changed now? I'm asking, what has changed?
Okay, as part of the agreement with the township, the applicant will go to the Essex County to get a light to, so that will be a signalized intersection.
They told us no then, so what has changed now?
That's, that will be part of the finished application, if approved. If not approved, then it won't be, and if it is approved, it will be.
Why would they approve it now when they wouldn't approve it in two thousand and five?
Uh.
They developed with a lot of money.
I'm not arguing, I'm just saying that the applicant will seek to have that done, and that will be part of the application.
Are there any other places in West Orange where you have nine hundred residents with a single access road, a cul-de-sac?
Sir, I'm gonna ask you to ask a question of Mr. Litwornia about his testimony.
Just ask you, is there any other business?
Sir, we have to focus on Mr. Litwornia's-
So there, there is not, okay, okay.
Okay.
Can any of the traffic experts say if they do this project, that the traffic conditions on Eagle Rock and Overroad are not going to deteriorate where they are today?
I'm going to object, it's an off-site traffic issue, this property is zoned, that is not a reason that can be considered in connection with this application.
A thousand cars.
And the town knew that when they zoned it.
Sir, sir, you can ask questions for Mr. Litwornia about his testimony. Let's focus on that. Thank you.
I think these are relevant questions because the town is gonna approve a project that's gonna deteriorate the life of the residents in this area. What are you gonna do for the residents in this area? If they approve this project, what are you gonna do?
This is-
You're gonna do nothing. You're not, you're not gonna compensate us, you're not gonna take care of us at all.
Sir.
You're gonna do nothing.
When you're done.
I know.
Okay, so the, the answer, please don't turn your back on me. The answer is during public comment, please come and ask these questions, and the board will listen to each one of these questions. We have experts-
But this, the traffic is what you're talking about today, and it's a traffic that's gonna be terrible. You're cramming too many residents into this back spot. You didn't approve it years ago when it was a hundred and thirty-six households. Why are you gonna approve it now with five hundred? The traffic is, uh, there's a million other problems with this project too, and everybody's talked about it, but the traffic is the problem, it's gonna deteriorate the life of everybody that lives in Western, uh, West Orange right now.
Okay, thank you for your question.
Mr. Chairman, let me just note my disagreements. With Mr. Plucker's objection to Mr. Baum's question, obviously, traffic analysis is fundamental to any site plan review, and that obviously implicates traffic impacts off the site of the development. So we would take the position that that aspect of Mr. Baum's statement comprised a relevant question, so I respectfully would disagree.
Done, okay, respectfully. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Litwornia on his testimony this evening? Please raise your hand and identify. Does anybody have a question about, for Mr. Litwornia on his testimony this evening? Seeing none, thank you very much for Mr. Litwornia.
Thank you, sir.
There is one housekeeping item, if we can.
Okay.
Uh, this is in respect to Mr. Green's report, which was inadvertently not entered into evidence when he testified, and since he's here, I'd like to enter it into evidence.
August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, and it's on the Litwornia stationary, but it was Mr. Green who signed it, correct?
Yes, this was a document he had relied upon, but it was not submitted at that time apparently, or it got overlooked.
That authenticated, all right?
Mr. Green.
It's, uh, five, eight pages.
Date of August twenty-second, twenty twenty-five.
There's a document dated August twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, and it has, it states re-utilities review memo. Are you familiar with this document?
Yes, I am.
And does this document represent your report in connection with the testimony you gave concerning the presence or absence of utilities and related information on the site plan application?
Yes, it does.
And do you adopt this report as part of your evidence?
Yes.
I would proffer this as the next objector exhibit.
Great, and this is Mark, uh, objector.
Oh, twenty-nine.
Oh, twenty-nine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, you have my copy. Okay.
Okay. Okay, thank you all. The next regular planning board meeting will be Wednesday, October first, twenty twenty-five, at seven thirty-
Oh, October, oh, I'm sorry.
Did you say seven thirty?
The different, uh, different meeting.
Our next meeting, sorry.
That's okay. Our, our, the next planning board regular meeting will be held Oc- Wednesday, October first, twenty- No?
October eighth, you haven't keep borders, October first.
The what?
October eighth.
October what?
Eighth.
Eight.
Not first.
Somewhere, somewhere it said the first, I think, in the email.
The holiday.
Jewish. The first, second, so first, at night.
What's our regular meeting in October? Chairman, it is the first? Oh, then it should be.
It should be the top.
Yeah, I'm thinking of course the next.
You're right, it's the evening of October first is, uh, yes. Okay, the evening of October first is a holiday. Okay, we're gonna, we will, we will get back to you on our regular meeting. Is our, uh,
No, September tenth.
September tenth is our meeting.
Yeah, that's why I got confused when you said September tenth.
September, look, I know what is actually happening, September tenth. We have the Affordable Housing Meeting in Town Hall in person at six thirty PM. Uh, first, and then we have
We are going to do the seventeen, uh, September seventeenth for this.
Right.
But with, potentially without Zoom.
Okay, and then this will be carried without further notice, this meeting. Hang in there. PB twenty-four, they show one West Essex Highlands Incorporated will be carried to September seventeenth, six thirty PM in council chambers. It's been sent out. Sept- September seventeenth, six thirty PM in council chambers. We may or may not have Zoom available. Please go to the website to find out if Zoom will be available. We will know within twenty-four hours.
No further notice, correct?
No further, I said that, no further notice will be required. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. I'm sorry, what?
Change the regular meeting on October-
Diana, if you can't change on the first meeting tonight.
And then we'll put it in the newspaper.
Wait, we will post in the newspaper.
Yeah, well.
And announce a new issue.
I just have to check if anybody's holiday.
Uh.
I don't want to do it again, so it will be posted tomorrow. Right now, tentatively, the regular meeting will be October eighth, twenty twenty-five via Zoom. We will post it on our website tomorrow. I just want to check that there's no holidays that we're missing, okay? Not October first, October eighth via Zoom. It will be the regular meeting of the planning board, Mr. Afron.
I want to clarify one question someone just asked me. Our next meeting in this case is September seventeenth, that's six thirty.
In, in-
They may not be Zoom.
Correct, we will, as, as soon as we know, we will publish if Zoom will be available.
People should look to see if Zoom's available because-
On our website.
Your only way to see it is to come here.
Yes, or go, or go to our website and find out.
And at that meeting, we're continuing testimony at this point on the objector's case.
That's correct, yeah.
Doing anything else at the stage.
Is being carried without further notice for this meeting specifically.
But he's asking.
Yeah, I, a member of the- A member of the public asked me, and there may have been some confusion because it's hard for people to hear some things, wanted to know when public comment would be, and that's gonna come later after all the evidence is done.
Depends on if we finish up with everybody's testimony, then at the seventeenth, we will identify when public comment will be.
Right, but it's not likely to happen on the seventeenth.
Correct.
We're gonna have a full night.
It will not be on the seventeenth.
That was a clarification that someone asked for.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who seconded?
I did.
All in favor? The eyes are above the nose. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.